So, when I was, what the hell was on? Mr. Second day. I was talking to my dad. And we had been, we'd been learning about one right here. My dad was jumping out. And so, I don't know, dad, that's how, I don't really understand why you have such a big belly. It was like, why not? I said, if somebody tries to shoot the mayor, you can just get, you can just block him. We, uh...
I know, I know. He thought that... Obviously, all the best of us did, and I go, something like, oh, that was weird. Because he tells...
Yeah.
Well, never seen them before cheating. And I just felt like, oh, that's horrible. People cheating on that one. Oh, yeah. How about, well, that's kind of funny. You're doing it right. What bullshit happens with birds and paper and that? I'll tell you. If you get it in my... And I'll sleep. What is someone really just doing like, what? Just don't share it. I mean, it's good, I don't want to share it. But we, and, uh, uh, he's working for Kevin. Oh, yeah, you know him? Yeah, but she work in head now. And she got, I was like, oh, you're doing it. I'll tell her.
Oh, I'm smiling.
Where's the... That happens in the car. I am now conditioned. Oh, man.
Alrighty. I know, I got, I just haven't retired from, from this. I was telling everybody over the weekend, I'm...
We're off, dude. Good. You know, I've always, I have always been touching, uh, hand, shoulder, arm, uh, whatever.
Good evening, everybody. We have a 5:30 committee meeting. And tonight, we're gonna be talking about the building design standards. Mr. Walden, I will ask you to please come on up, sir, and educate us, and we'll get started.
Yes. Can I start with a plug?
Absolutely.
So, if you, if you have looked at the, the city's Facebook in the last couple of days, you may have seen something on there about Oak Street. Um, so, Oak Street ahead, where is the corridor plan for the Oak Street corridor? Um, looking at transportation, land use, um, landscaping, access management, kind of a comprehensive look at that all in one. We have a public kickoff meeting, uh, this Thursday at 5:00 PM. Presentation will be at 5:30. It's kind of an open house format for the consultants to kind of share some information. Uh, it's one of our first of many, uh, public engagement, uh, opportunities. We have a lot of, uh, we've already had some public engagement with some, some key stakeholders, so... But it's very excited. I think it's something the community obviously checked, checked today. There was over 300 comments when, when people were asked, what is one thing you would change about Oak Street? Had over 300 responses, so I, I think people are kind of passionate about it. So, it's, uh, uh, very, very excited and happy with that.
I was thinking kickoff thing, what?
It's, it's going to be in this room, uh, Thursday at 5:00. Yep.
And I was so happy to see so many people wanted more roundabouts. I mean, just put them everywhere, get rid of the lights, and, and you go back, how many years, David? When you and Sheila and Mary voted to do those first ones?
And everybody was...
And everybody thought the world of it.
So, anyway, I wanted to do a quick, uh, plug for that. Um, and, uh, I was gonna bring up, uh, Kyle Kelly. He is our, our long-range planner. So, one of the things that we did in response to some, some requests from y'all is we, we developed a report, uh, to kind of look at and examine our building design standards. So, I'll kind of let Kyle come up and, and give you some information, then I'll come back and talk, and we can have question and answer.
Hey, Kyle.
Hello, good evening. How are y'all doing?
Good.
Doing well, thank you. I'll go ahead and wait for you to get here. You good? Alright, uh, so, tonight, I just wanted to present, uh, this report, which you should all have in front of you. So, this is a, uh, building design standards report. So, what we did here is look at Conway and compare Conway to some other cities in Arkansas and also in this region of the country, uh, just to see how we stack up in terms of what we're requiring for facades and what other places are doing differently. So, if you'll turn to page one, it gives kind of an overview here of the eight different categories that we looked at, and on the very last page, there's also a definition sheet, if you're in need of that as well. Uh, so, you'll see here, we have articulation and massing, uh, percent glass or glazing requirements, uh, metal as a primary material, EPH is a primary material, masonry requirements, uh, whether it's for all facades, whether it's citywide, and then if there's any color requirements. So, starting off on the articulation and massing, uh, so generally, uh, Conway was, uh, fairly comparable to other cities in Arkansas. There were some places, uh, such as Overland Park, Kansas, and Collierville, Tennessee, which did have more stringent standards. Um, so, what articulation would include is breaking up the facade to basically per, um, kind of preventing just these long, uh, uninterrupted walls that are blank and don't have any sort of vertical or, um, horizontal articulation on them. So, for the, uh, glazing requirements, we did not specify a, uh, a specific percent there, uh, which some other cities did do. Um, so, that's definitely something that could potentially be tightened up is, uh, actually saying you have to have a certain percent on the ground floor and then a certain percentage on the upper floors of buildings. Um, and then for the metal, so, again, this one, we're fairly in line with the other cities here. Um, so, uh, there was some places that actually allow metal to be, uh, the main material used on the facade, which is, uh, usually not ideal. I, I think we're generally looking more towards using masonry and things like that as the, the primary material, especially for the street-facing or the primary facade. Um, so, there were a few other cities that allowed it for, like, trim and accent pieces, uh, which, you know, again, is kind of what we're in line with, is, uh, allowing it up to a certain percentage, but not having it be the dominant material. And then for EPH, it's kind of the same thing. We actually do not, uh, really reference EPH in our current code. Uh, and this is, again, in line with what some other cities did. Uh, some places allow this to be used, um, you know, just across the board for any primary facade. Um, so, we're, we're definitely doing fairly well on that. And then for masonry, um, we have the 50% requirement, so it needs to be, you know, brick, stone, things like that as the primary material for the facade. Uh, there was some cities, again, uh, like the ones listed up top there, like Franklin, Tennessee, Murfreesboro, uh, Overland Park, that require 70 to 80% be, uh, masonry. So, again, that's probably something that could potentially be tightened up. Uh, Conway was also really good in requiring this for not just the front facade, but also for the side and, uh, other, uh, parts of the building that are not facing the street, um, which is always good because you don't just want to have something that, you know, is just like a stage set or looks like it's a fake facade that only is on the front, and then you go to the side of the building and you don't see it. So, we're doing pretty well there. And then we're also requiring it citywide, which is good. There was, again, some places that had a certain district or an overlay area where they had these requirements, but didn't require it citywide. So, Conway does require these, uh, standards be applied throughout the city. And then for color requirements, we did not specify any particular colors. Uh, certain cities said you have to use creams and earthy tones and things like that. Um, and then there was other ones that prohibited really bright, like neon and fluorescent colors and things like that. Um, so, we did not have a particular palette that we said that you have to pick from, uh, but we do, uh, say that it, you know, it kind of needs to be, uh, in line with, you know, existing things. And so, there were some regulations, but not as much as some other places. So, that's kind of just the overview of how Conway compares to other cities. And, um, I think James is gonna present more on some of the, uh, specifics in here. But yeah, there's a, a chart on page two that just kind of shows what everything is, the requirements for Conway and for the other cities, if you want to take a look at that. Um, and they're all color-coded, so the green means that it is allowed or required. The yellow means that it's partially allowed or required. The red means that it is prohibited, and the gray color means that it is just not referenced in their code. Uh, so, feel free to take a look at that as well, and that kind of gives you an idea of how every other city that we looked at stacks up to Conway. So, I'll turn it back over to James. Thank you.
And on that chart, it's, it's sometimes a little bit hard. Not all of it is, I would say, 100% apples to apples. Uh, so, for instance, you know, like, metal as a primary, that would be, you, you could read that to be that it would, you know, the green would say that it would be allowed as a primary or partially allowed as a primary. So, that's typically when you're talking, and then if we're looking at it, for instance, if you're looking at masonry, that's typically, you would view it as required as a, as a primary. So, depending on, depending on the material type, so... It is, Kyle put a, a lot of research into this, uh, a lot of time into it, uh, examining things. Some of the things that I noticed, um, kind of as a, as a general, uh, overarching theme is that when you compare us to, for instance, Rogers, Fayetteville, Fort Smith, some of those, some of those cities that we like to compare ourselves as, as, as being peers, our regulations are generally in line with those. When you compare us to other Arkansas cities, we're very much more stringent and strict. So, um, and when you look at a state, I would say, um, there's several cities that we're, we're generally in line with. Uh, some cities that have been identified as either, depending on how you want to put it, peers or aspirational peers, uh, Franklin, Tennessee, Murfreesboro, Tennessee, uh, Collierville, Tennessee, uh, the Tennessees, they, they have very stringent regulations. And then cities, uh, like Overland Park, Kansas, which I, I think, back in the day, Bill Polk really loved Overland Park, Kansas, uh, those being aspirational ones that were, were less stringent than those cities in, in a lot of ways. Um, so, one of the things that, you know, and in thinking over all this about our, our regulations, the more I thought about some, one of the things that I've heard anecdotally over time is that we wanted to achieve a Conway look. And I think, the more I think about that, the more difficult that is. Um, that just in terms of the scale and scope and the way that the regulations are currently written, I, I don't know if that's realistically, physically, feasibly possible to have a, a Conway look in the same way that if you go to McKinney, Texas, or Plano, or some of those cities down there where everything's white sandstone, it, it all looks the same or in much the same way that Mammell has a Mammell look. I'm not sure that that, that is wholly, uh, feasible in, in terms of that. Don't have a, a ton of recommendations because ultimately, this is really a question of you as the, the, sort of the elected body, what you all want the community to look like. We can draft whatever tools are necessary to achieve those things, but that's more of a, I would, I would put that on, on a, a question to y'all. I would resist any temptation to only think about this in reference to one project. If we're thinking about this solely about one, I, I would resist that temptation simply because there's a lot of the rest of the city that, that would be affected in thinking about that. That being said, I do have probably two specific recommendations that I, that I would say are takeaways that I think are, are important. The first being making it more difficult to obtain waivers, uh, from the regulations. When this was passed in 2007, I don't think a, a ton of consideration was given to sort of the, the stress and difficulty that it, it places on staff because the way it, it stands is, if a waiver is granted, that waiver is granted by staff. So, you can imagine who all the pressure is put on when you have a situation where someone doesn't want to abide by the standards. It's not fun, uh, not fun at all. Uh, and so, uh, other places where I have worked, where we've, we've had sort of standards that, that might not necessarily be popular with everyone is to have those relief valves to those standards kick up to either the city council or planning commission. So, for instance, did work in Cabot, we, we adopted a sidewalk standard, and that sidewalk standard never got met. It was all, we're, it was, it was frequently not being met at, at different times. The city got sued or ADA lawsuit. They made the, the waiver requirement go to city council, and they just stopped. Stopped getting waiver requests because they, they knew that they weren't gonna get a waiver request. And so, adding a, a check valve to that, I think is, I think is important. I think additionally, probably one thing that I would, I would recommend is, is making the, the standards more objective. So, in areas where some of the language is fluffy, if we can have a numerical standard or a very specific standard, so, for instance, on windows, we don't have anything that says the actual percentage of the building that has to be covered in windows. So, something that, that would be, for example, a numerical standard on that. Clear definitions on, for instance, what masonry is, what masonry isn't, uh, those types of things. And, uh, you know, just clear, objective standards that, that make it a little bit easier to apply at times. So, with that, that's... Thoughts? Questions, any remarks?
Well, my own issue is is that EPH as, as a, as a primary allows that. It says that we don't really talk about it, but...
Isn't that the stuff that you can just, like, put a pencil through?
Used to be.
Is it not anymore?
Not so much.
Because that bothers, it bothers me about the longevity of the, of the building and what it's gonna look like.
And having brought that up, I would like to see if we can get somebody in the, I'm sorry, let me pull that down, I saw it go on. I would like to get somebody from Nabholz Construction or somebody, uh, from Salter to come by here and tell us about that particular product, uh, EPH, and, and let, and I think, I know I need more information about it. Uh, but one, one of the phrases in here that I really liked was, let me find, high-quality materials. And, and if we could, if we could somehow define that brick is, or, or, or masonry is a high-quality material, that glass is a high-quality material, that whatever else is a high-quality material, then I think it fits in with what James was saying, and that is, we can't make every building in town look exactly alike.
Nor should we.
And, thank you. That's exactly right.
I don't, I think it would make for a boring town.
Yeah. It, it would, it would.
That's fair.
And, and so, I, I would like to, I would like to see us, number one, find out more about EPH. Find out what it is and, and, and is it, is it durable? Is it, um, will hold up?
The longevity of it.
Yeah.
That's, that's an issue for me.
Exactly. And, and then, once we find that out, then we can put a list of things together that are high-quality materials, whatever they happen to be. Um, uh, I, I would just as soon stay away from a metal building, but, you know, that's, that's just my preference on that.
And there's, uh, one of the cities that, I think, when we, when we researched this, it was either Aletha or, or Overland Park, they had Class 1, Class 2, and Class 3 materials. Uh, and so, they had, it, it was kind of an, an interesting take on that, that you had certain materials that are, that are considered very high-quality, some that are considered marginal quality, and you have some that are, that are considered low-quality, low-quality materials. And, uh, so, that, I think what I've, what I've seen in some cities is there's a, a list and a not list, and that gradation, I thought, was, was somewhat interesting to me, that they had, they had three grades of materials. It's, it is interesting when you, the, the question about EPH, there are communities that, that indicate it as a high-quality material, and then there are, are communities like Fayetteville that do not indicate it as a high-quality material.
And look, Andy, I don't know enough about it. I just know what I've heard other people say, and I think it was Brandon Rule who said, you can just stick a pencil through it.
I'll, I'll reach out to Brad Hagman tomorrow and see if he can get some of them Nabholz to come, come speak to. I think that'd be a good place to, to start.
And I know we're not supposed to tie this to one project and everything, but that whole deal going out there behind Sams, that, that's, EPH is a primary material on it, and I'm concerned, I, I know it's gonna look pretty, it's gonna look really good, but I'm just concerned about the longevity of the wear.
That, that's why we need somebody in here, because y'all are probably like me. We all heard different sides, but we didn't hear, had an expert in here to tell us one way or another, so, who do you go with, you know?
And, and let me share this. People in the construction business, you're gonna find differing opinions even among those folks.
Yeah.
It's kind of like an engineer. If you tell an engineer to go build a bridge, you'll get six different, if you get six engineers, you'll get six different designs. So, uh...
Yeah. I think, and, and one of the things that I've, I've heard at different times are the reasons why some, or, or, this is at least my interpretation of it, the reasons why different cities have interpreted certain materials as high-quality, for instance, with, with masonry is because of the, there is texture to those materials, that it's got some, some level of differentiation. Um, and so, when you've got others where they, they talk about, like, precision concrete blocks, that it's just a, a, a flat facade, or if you, you know, at times where there's, they've talked about just flat hardy panel or, or EPH, that it, it does not have enough variation in material to create the same visual interest that you might have with masonry or some of these things like certain mantle, metal paneling systems. Um, and so, it, it, one of the things that I saw that was, was interesting is some of the places where they mentioned EPH, they mentioned EPH as a secondary material for accent and trims. And having differing materials, I think oftentimes can create some of that visual interest that's very, very important about, about structures, but...
But for the waivers, putting another layer in there, I'm totally on board with that.
Yeah, that needs to be off the...
Plan commission on...
Yeah. I like that. I'd rather, I'd rather them bring it to the council than, than the planning commission. Y'all good with that?
Yeah, I'm absolutely good, yeah.
Okay.
Alright, well, I will, like I said, I'll reach out to Brad tomorrow. He can put us in contact with somebody.
James, how, how do you think our, I mean, design standards here? If you just came to Conway and just looked around, would you think that it looks pretty comparable? I mean, I think sometimes we sell ourselves a little short, and we don't want to ruffle anybody's feathers by putting any more guidelines in place. But when you go to other cities and you see a Lowe's look totally different than what we have here, or a Sam's look totally different, I think sometimes we sell ourselves a little short that we're kind of scared to go through that, you know?
I think it ultimately depends on, it is a, it is a, where you stand depends on where you sit. And if you're, it, what your idea of Conway is. So, is your idea of Conway that Conway is the best city in central Arkansas? Heck, yeah, we're, we're there. Is Conway the best city in Arkansas and the most visually appealing? That's, that's debatable. Are, are we a regional leader? That's debatable. Yeah. I mean, there's, there's reasons why at times, you know, we've had community leaders point to Franklin or Collierville, and that's because we ain't there. Um, so, that's a, it, it ultimately ends up being a question of what do we, what do we want to be? What do we want to achieve? And I think that, that is a, a central answer because the, the aspect of what we want to be, that answers the policy question, and it's very easy to write policies to achieve that. I think one of the other things that is, there are certain aspects of the, the regulations that have been, I'll say, aspirational, meaning that, that they've not ever been enforced. Um, and that, that, you know, creates some difficulty. I think the other thing that, that creates challenges where we, where there are things that we don't end up getting addressed is that the policy is generally with development standards, if you touch it, you fix it. But if you don't touch it, you don't fix it. And so, you could add 2,000 square feet or 20,000 square feet onto an existing building, and it, the, that 20,000 square feet has to look great, but we don't have, have a point at which you have to then address all these other things. And in some other cities, there's a tipping point at which it triggers full compliance. And so, that's a, that's, that's one thing that I think there, there are, there are certain sites that stuff just never gets addressed unless you demo it and start over. And that, I think, is probably an area that, that could be looked at. It's, it's difficult because, um, it's very rational the way that, that this is constructed. The, the issue that you get into is, once you reach a certain tipping point, well, that may be, that may be far more involved, require something far more involved than what the, what that builder or contractor had in mind. And so, when they're thinking, oh, it's a half-million job, and you just hit them with, no, this is a $1 million job, then, you know, that, that can cause some difficulty. know, that, that can cause some difficulty. So.
And I'm, I may be wrong in, in my thinking in this, but Collierville sort of popped up as a suburb with mostly houses, because everybody commuted to Memphis. And it wasn't until later that all the commercial stuff started going in, you know what I'm saying? And so, they were, I think they went about it maybe a little bit, we've been around a long time, I mean, we're gonna have some old stuff.
Yeah, I don't know Franklin as well as I do Collierville, but.
Yeah, Frank, Franklin is relatively, I mean, it has grown, grown rapidly. Murphysboro is another city that has grown, grown rapidly.
I don't want it to look like Cary, North Carolina. I was, I mean, talk about beautiful, it's gorgeous out there, but I stayed in a hotel across the street for four days, never knew there was a mall across the street from me. I would've been shopping, but with all the, with all the tree, you know, the canopy and stuff that they require, I mean, we drove by literally by car dealers that we could not see because of the trees. Yeah, he was real shook up. But I mean, I think you can go too far with it, too, you know?
Well, as you, as you, I know we're gonna have a full-blown Oak Street corridor study over the next 12 months, but as you can already see over the past couple of years, there's been some infill redevelopment on Oak Street, and generally what happens is, a building that's seen its better days disappears and is replaced with, for the most part, something a lot better, um, for the most part. But, uh, you see that in other areas of town as well, we're seeing that because we're sort of getting a little landlocked in certain areas, and infrastructure's already there in some of these places, and it's easier to tear down a building that has little value and build something new, so when we have those opportunities, we may, need to make sure we maximize the value of that new building to our community.
Yeah, and, and things are important, it, a lot of times when I, back in my past consulting life, I was, I was, I was trying to, to talk about the difference between having a metal building and having something that might have the front facade and the side walls addressed, and wh- what, what you see a lot of times, if it's, if there's a really high-quality building that goes in, it can have a lifecycle that lives on past that. What I've seen in, in other communities where you, you have that, that just typical plain metal building, is that it goes out real fast, the business might go out real fast that's in there, and then nobody else wants to go in, and it, you're just left with kind of a, yeah, a shell.
Well, when, when old buildings have good bones, you're seeing that downtown right now, this building, several buildings around town getting, downtown getting remade because they're built right the first time, to, to, to stay.
All right.
Thank you, James.
That'd be great, that'd be great.
Maybe a little show and tell, bring some stuff with you.
Yeah, I, I'm a visual person. I wanna touch it, I wanna touch it, I wanna see if I can put my finger through it. That's right, that's right.
James, I appreciate your work on this, and Kyle, I appreciate your work on this, thank you very much.
Yeah, Kyle, Kyle did a ton of research, it looks, it looks nice because Beth touched it, so there's very little that I have been involved, but I've, I've got good folks, so.
Kyle, that's more words than I've heard you say in, in six months. He's just stazed in there, keeps, he's stazed there, keeps his head down and works. You did, both of you did well. All right, council, it is, uh, 5:59, we'll take about a 30-minute break and meet back here and start at 6:30.
That's good.
Good evening, everyone. We proceed each council meeting with a word of prayer and prayers of allegiance. If you would, please feel free to join us. Ms. Isby, could I ask you a word or prayer tonight, please?
If you'll bow with me, our gracious Father, we thank you for this wonderful community that you've blessed us with. We just pray, Lord, that we continue to do what you ask of us to do in this community, and we just pray for all of those that need prayer, and we thank you for who you are, and we thank you for all that you do. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now call this meeting ordered. Mr. Garrett, would you call the robe, please?
Mr. Hawkins?
Here.
Mr. Grimes?
Here.
Ms. Tucker?
Here.
Ms. Mel?
Here.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Isby?
Here.
Okay, you should have received copies of the February 2028, uh, February 28th council meeting. Any corrections, changes?
Make a motion for approval as submitted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the minutes as submitted, there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes eight to zero. First up, we have the community development portion of the meeting, and Mr. Hawkins, we'll turn this over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on the agenda is a resolution setting a public hearing to discuss the closing of a portion of the street immediately west of 3870 Friendship Road, and the resolution number on this is Resolution R. 2213. This is to set, Mr. Walden, tell us what you got, sir.
This, yeah, so this is set a public hearing for this, uh, this is a portion of the old Highway 25, uh, that it is a small portion of roadway that, that when RDOT turned it over, uh, it ends up being really close to an individual's driveway, and so it's been determined not to be necessary by anybody, uh, and so that's set a public hearing for it to follow the next council meeting.
Is that where the motor home and the boat are sitting?
If you're, if you're driving out the Beaver Ford, can you see that weird little, little leg of road? That's what that is, yeah.
I make a motion for the adoption of the resolution, setting the public hearing.
We have a motion, a second to approve this resolution, setting a public hearing for the next council meeting, which will be March 22nd. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Passes eight to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is a resolution requesting the Faulkner County, uh, to place a certified lien on property located at 512 Third Avenue for incurred expenses by the city of Conway. Uh, we have a resolution to be read for this, it's Resolution R. 2214. Is there a owner or representative of an owner of that particular piece of property, which is 512 Third Avenue with us tonight? Mr. Calvert, good evening, sir.
Yes.
How are you?
I'm well.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Calvert, if you would, please state your name, full name, and your address, please, sir.
My address?
For the record, yes.
My name is Paul Calvert, I live in Greenbrier. I would like to call, um, Mrs. Schrag and Austin Sullivan for witnesses.
Uh, Mr. Calvert, this is not a hearing tonight?
Um, it's supposed to be a hearing.
No, sir, I don't think so. We're doing three things tonight, we're here to consider the cost of the cleanup of your property, we're here to consider placing a lien on your real property for this amount, the amount stated 16453, and then we're also here for consideration of certifying this amount determined at the hearing, uh, well, the word hearing's in there.
Right.
Plus a 10% penalty for collection and filing of fees to the tax collector of Faulkner County to be placed on the tax books as delinquent taxes and collected accordingly. Uh, let me confer with the city attorney.
I'm not sure if I'm on, that's correct. He, he does have a chance, the property owner does have a chance to, to speak, though.
We have a chance to speak, but this is not a, a, a hearing as in, in the legal sense, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm entitled to a hearing, I, I've understood the law correctly.
You're hearing to, you're here to state your case.
Okay, so I have, am I entitled to a hearing, or are we just gonna, 'cause I'm not, I'm not a witness to the event that allegedly occurred.
Again, I'm gonna have to defer to the city attorney.
Yeah, so, so what the council, this is what, where the resolution is styled, is it's a resolution that seeks to have a cleanup lien imposed on the property owner for the cleanup that's already taken place, and to have that lien, if the council approves, certified to the Faulkner County tax collector. That, those are the issues in this resolution.
Right, I mean, I think, I think I'm entitled to a hearing.
If, if you want to, if the property owner wishes to contest any of those items that are on the resolution, if he's saying that there was no cleanup cost, or that it should not, for whatever reason, that he wants to say not be certified to the Faulkner County tax collector, that's what, that's the issue on the agenda tonight.
Right, so how do we determine if those things are appropriate if we do not have witnesses?
We can't advise you how to conduct your objection if you have.
Okay, so, so I would like to question those who are involved, so, so that, so that y'all can know what, what the facts are.
Yeah, you get to make a statement, but you don't get to question, I mean, it's not a court.
Okay, but if, when I, if, if I take this to court, it will, it's, that's, that's what the hearings look like in court, and I think generally, when you have a hearing, then.
And you would have a right to appeal, if the council tonight makes a decision that a property owner is dissatisfied with on a resolution such as this, the property owner has a right to appeal to circuit court within 45 days.
Right, so I'm not gonna get it, get to even question the witnesses, is that where we're at here?
There, there's no provision in either the ordinance or the statute for you to question witnesses at this time.
Okay, so, okay, so I, I don't know the legal definition of a hearing, but I was under the impression, generally, when you have a hearing, that you have witnesses and you have some sort of idea of who's, if, if there's actually any facts to be determined.
Your hearing, the hearing of a property owner in this case would be to contest if he or she chooses so, whether, um, there was a cleanup cost and whether the cost should be certified to the Faulkner County tax collector.
Okay. Okay, well, um, I guess I'll, I'll, I'll do what little I can. Um, Arkansas law prohibits, um, property owners from being held responsible for the actions of their tenants. I think it is very clear, it is well-known, if we, if I could have questioned Austin Sullivan or Mrs. Schrag, it would've been, would've been very clear to you, to you all that, um, the mess, if there was one, and if it was cleaned up, that it was caused by my tenant. There's, I, I don't think there's any doubt whatsoever about that fact in the case. Arkansas law is quite clear, and I can quote the law for you, it is, a property owner shall not be held responsible for the actions of his or her tenant. This is the, I think, the fourth time, there's been three other times y'all have filed liens against my properties illegally. The last time, I was blocked from attending the meeting because I was told it was going to be at 6:30, the meeting was over by 6:30. The, um, it was also done through Zoom, and it was, I wasn't given proper notice for that either. The previous lien that y'all filed, my attorney attempted to come and ask for, for a hearing, and he was denied the hearing as well, he wanted to ask for wit, to ques- so question witnesses as well, and he was denied that. The previous one to that, I didn't show up, I was busy. This has got to stop, this is getting ridiculous, this has been going on for three years, or a little over three years now. It is unlawful for property owners to be held responsible for the actions of their tenants. The city council, or sorry, the city attorney's office knows this, they should've informed you of this, this has been going on, and it needs to stop, this is ridiculous.
Mr. Calvert, is this the same tenant every time?
On two different occasions, yes. They have since, they have since moved recently.
That's good news.
So I, I think the part of the, part of the issue is that I am being punished because I'm being too gentle with my tenants, and I have a right to be gentle with my tenants. If you wish to punish my tenants and hold them responsible, you can. It is unlawful for you to hold me responsible for their actions, and so far, this has been happening, um, for about three years, and it's been, I've been, I've had rental property in Conway for nearly 20 years, it's gotten to the point where I'm basically afraid to do business in Conway now. I, I've been selling my properties. This one property, I've actually got a buyer for it, but because of the, the foolishness that's been involved with this, with the city, um, the title company's holding it up. I would've probably already had it sold by this time, if it hadn't been for that kind of foolishness. But it, it's getting ridiculous, and I don't, I don't know if the city council here knows, but I have a lawsuit against the city, the mayor's part of that lawsuit, Spencer Clausen is part of that lawsuit. They have illegally filed liens against my properties, they have illegally filed charges against me, I was the victim of some bad tenants, and instead of charging the tenants, they filed the charges against me. That is illegal, it's actually a crime in the state of Arkansas to file false charges against people, and not, not only did they file first, false charges against me, they filed, they filed charges that knew I was innocent of, and they, they chose not to file the charges against the tenants who they knew were guilty. It's ridiculous. I don't really care what you do with this lien, if, if you wanna follow the law, you shouldn't pass it, but I don't really care, it's getting ridiculous.
Mr. Clausen, did we do any work at this particular piece of property to clean it up?
Yes, sir, indeed we did. Uh, the case was open, 12/8/21, Mr. Calvert was contacted on 12/15, 12/17, 12/29, 12/29 again by letter, 1/6/22, 1/11/22, he was called on 1/11/22 as well, he was sent a courtesy warning, 1/12/22, we requested cleanup on 1/12/22, we gave him an additional three weeks to respond to us, and the cleanup was finally performed on 2/2 of 22. Invoice was mailed to him on 2, 2/2 of 22. Uh, so during this, uh, window of 50-plus days, he was given, uh, roughly 13 attempts of contact, saying that this mess needed to be cleaned up. Trash, there was a refrigerator had food pulled out, refrigerator in the middle of the yard had food pulled out, scattered in the yard, looks like animals had been in it. It was, it is in pretty poor shape, and I felt bad for the neighbors, this is something that code enforcement, it's what we're here to do, and it's what we did, nothing, nothing more. Thank you, Mr. Clausen.
I make a motion for adoption of the resolution.
Have a motion and a second to adopt this resolution, I'm sorry.
So, and just briefly, and I'm not sure that I'm on here, so that the council's aware, 'cause I don't expect, this is not, um, something that is casual reading, but under Arkansas, th- this is the statute that applies to these issues, since, um, a question has been raised, under Arkansas Code annotated 1450- Under Arkansas Code Annotated 1454903, if a property owner fails to correct, remove, abate, or eliminate conditions violating a city ordinance, after being given seven calendar days' notice, the city is authorized by law to correct the problem. If the city corrects the problem pursuant to that statute, the city is given a lien for costs, which include cleanup, includes costs, including administrative costs, to bring the property into compliance with city ordinances. And under Arkansas Code Annotated 1454901, cities are expressly empowered to order a property owner to remove garbage, rubbish, unsightly or unsanitary thing placed or conditioned on their property. And that's, that's what code enforcement did.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution to place a certified lien in the amount of 21098 for the expense incurred by the city of this property. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
Resolution R. 2214, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Passes eight to zero. Mr. Hawkins.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance appropriating funds and accepting the low bid for the overnight emergency shelter for the community development department. And, hey, Shawana.
Hey.
Welcome.
Thank you, hello.
Hello.
So, we are asking for your approval for the lowest qualified bidder for the overnight emergency shelter. We have our architect, Mr. Branson Evans, with Level Five, is here with us on tonight as well. So, we know this project has been a long time coming, but we have been diligently working behind the scenes with our architect and making sure we get the bids in. It's a bit more than we anticipated, but we feel like this will be a great project for the city of Conway, and not just the city, but for our nonprofits as well. And we want to invest in this neighborhood, like we did the Pond Street community. So we are asking for your approval. You should have a revised ordinance before you. We're just asking for your approval to proceed.
Make a motion to waive the three readings.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes eight to zero. Do you have some pictures for us there?
Yes, those are our conceptual drawings we have.
Ann, Ann says she likes pictures, so I was gonna get you to bring them up.
We're looking forward to it, we're pretty excited to bring this to Conway.
What's your ordinance number?
We're looking, um...
Thank you, 26.
2023, early 2023. We were looking, hopefully, by the end of 2022, but with the way construction has been going, maybe early 2023.
We appreciate all your, your work and your committee's work on it.
It is, it's...
Thank you all. We appreciate you, too. Thank you.
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance O. 2226, along with the emergency clause. Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance with the emergency clause. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Tucker?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
And the emergency clause, Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Tucker?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Those both pass eight to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shawana.
Mr. Hawkins.
Next item, Mr. Mayor's, resolution authorizing the office of the city attorney to seek condemnation to acquire a portion of property located at 2035 Prince Street. We have a resolution to be read for this item. It's Resolution R. 2215. Thank you. Had a senior moment.
Mr. Finkenbader, or...
So this is, this is a part of the Donaghy Phase Two Roundabout at Donaghy and Prince Street. There is one parcel of property, and then we, we reached an agreement with the property owner, Department of Transportation has with the property owner, over the price of the acquisition and other things that go along with that. However, the property itself has liens placed on it, so when it went to closing, they were unable to close on the property because the lien holders were refusing to sign certain documents that the title company needed. I believe that the only way to be fair to the property owner, since we've, they've been fair to the city, and to ensure that they're paid in a timely manner for the property that we're acquiring for this roundabout, which is under construction, as everyone who's driven through their nose. So we are in possession of their property, but they have not been paid. I believe that this is the fair way to pursue getting those, that those property owners paid, when they shouldn't be held hostage because of some out-of-state banks refused to sign off paperwork. So there's no additional cost to the city. It's the same price that we negotiated before, but this will, this will get them their money while we've been using their property.
I make a motion for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve this resolution, authorizing the city attorney to seek condemnation for property located at 2035 Prince Street. Any further discussion? And Charles, again, thank you for your hard work on this.
And we've talked to the property owners and advised them that they had the option to can, to pursue insanity and continue to try to get these out-of-state banks, that, that, it's their mortgage holders. Or we could pursue condemnation, and, and they agreed that they would like us to pursue condemnation. So we did, we've been talking to the property owners, who've been very nice throughout this whole process. But we've, we've kept them aware of what's going on every step of the way. It's very important to, to us.
Mr. Garrett.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Passes eight to zero. Mr. Hawkins.
Final item here, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance appropriating funds and authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with Conway Corporation for property at 80850 South Hark Rider Street and 695 Enterprise Avenue, and this is all for the Transportation Department. We have an ordinance to read for this item. It's Ordinance O. 2227.
And one correction, Mr. Hawkins and counsel, the amount that you see in the ordinance there is actually $70,000 less. And that is, Conway Corporation is keeping a piece of the property, and they're gonna lease it to us for a dollar, dollar a year, because they have to have it for, is it their satellite area? Dish area?
Correct, so this is, if anyone's familiar with this, this area, it's that whole big Conway Corp complex, the part that's down south that touches the fire station.
Okay.
Instead of the city buying that, that corner property, Conway Corp has agreed to allow the city to lease that whole, that block east of the, the fence, so that Conway Corp can use, or so that the city transportation department can use it for storage. So what that did was, it adjusted the sale price down 70,000, which I know is very disappointing to everyone here, the city's paying less money, but, and, and Conway Corp is allowing the city to lease that for a dollar a year. So...
Rick Carroll lost sleep over that.
Good.
I make a motion to waive three readings.
Have a motion and a second to waive three readings. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes eight to zero.
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance O. 2227.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance appropriating funds and authorizing the mayor's office to enter into a lease agreement with Conway Corporation for property located at 80850 South Hark Rider and 695 Enterprise Avenue. Any further discussion?
And, and just clarification, so this also, the way this transaction is structured is that the, the service center property itself is gonna be leased to Conway Corp until they're ready. The whole point of this was for the Department of Transportation for Conway. It needed a new facility. Conway Corp, in order to serve the citizens of Conway with power and water and all the other services it provided, it also needed a larger facility. So, transportation is moving into the service center, and Conway Corp, my understanding, is they're moving into a new facility that will better enable them to serve the citizens of Conway. And I know Conway Corp is here, so in, in my legal opinion, this is a very good deal for both entities, as we both serve the citizens of Conway. But it does involve leases, as we talked about, that southern portion, but also a lease of the service center to Conway Corporation, at least to the city of the Enterprise Avenue, but immediate possession of the portion of the property that the city plans to use for the new fire station.
Yeah, that was what was pushing us on the town, this fire station. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Tucker?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Passes eight to zero. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Next up, we have the Public Service Committee, and we have a resolution to approve, I'm not gonna try to pronounce that acronym, and associates design the Conway Soccer Complex for Parks and Recreation. Steve, I'll let you explain what that stands for.
Half?
No, that's not how you spell half.
This is the engineering firm, gonna, okay. This engineering firm did all the master plan for the soccer complex located on Museum Road. They also did all the drawings for us for, to get ready for the bond issue. And the lead person with them is the same lead person we had for City of Colleges and for Conway Station Park, which turned out pretty good, if I do say so myself, so...
I make a motion for adoption of the resolution.
Have a motion and a second to approve this resolution, to approve half, and associates design the Conway Soccer Complex for Parks Recreation. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
The Resolution R. 2216, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Passes eight to zero. Next, we have an ordinance appropriating funds to acquire property located at 450 Corporate Drive for Parks and Recreation Department, and this is our first big step. So, Mr. Mr. Ibbison.
Yes, sir, this gets the ball rolling for sure. Purchased the building at 2.75, the Axiom Building, that will be integral to the community center and the aquatic facility. May take a little bit longer than that. Yes, sir. I think there's 17 acres total in that, that runs all the way back out to Exchange.
We own the property.
We own...
They own, they own the building, and we're buying the building, and the building's what, 100, 120,000 square feet?
124,000 square feet.
Okay.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings.
Second.
It has an emergency clause as well.
Yes, sir, does have an emergency clause.
Oh, I'm sorry, my, my bad, my bad. I have a motion, I'm a little ahead. I have a motion and a second to waive three readings. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes eight to zero.
Make a motion, oh, make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance O. 2128, along with the emergency clause.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance with the emergency clause. Any further discussion? Counsel, if y'all, Jamie, once we close on this, Jamie will have the key file for us to get in there, get them, walk in, take another look at it. It's pretty impressive. No further discussion. Mr. Garrett.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Tucker?
Yes.
And then mercy clause, Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Tucker?
Yes.
Those both pass eight to zero. And last, we have the Public Safety Committee. First up, we have Police Chief, consideration to approve the removal of vehicles from inventory with the Conway Police Department.
Hello. So tonight, we're asking to dispose of five vehicles that we no longer have a use for. We plan to auction these vehicles through public surplus.
Make a motion that we allow for these to be taken off of our inventory.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to allow these vehicles to be taken off of our inventory. Any further discussion? Yes, sir.
So, I don't know about the top two, but I do know that the bottom three do. The bottom three all run, to my knowledge, I'm not sure about the top two.
If you approve it, they will be on public surplus shortly.
It varies. Sometimes they, they, they bring good money, and sometimes they don't, just depending on the number of bidders and the time of the year. I can't, I, I can't, I can't give you an honest answer of, of what they come for. Well, sometimes those police vehicles are not in the best of shape by the time we're done with them, so... Yeah.
Notice some of the new vehicles out on the road.
We are, we've gotten, we've gotten six of them that we've brought into town. I think we've got six more that's, that's supposed to come into town, so we're working on them.
While we're talking about vehicles, counsel, I met with the department head yesterday, and I've asked all of them to take it, take a really hard look right now at the vehicles we have on the road, take-home vehicles in all departments due to the cost of fuel, you know, because we, we plugged in a number for our budget, and I asked them, I think it's increased, well, as, when we met, it had increased about 15%. We, we started with that number, but it's the number that's gonna be adjusted daily. So they've all agreed to do that, and I think that'll, that'll serve some, some good things there. I see you granting tap, Lee, I know you gotta have police cars.
We're trying.
Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Passes eight to zero. We have Chief up still, that's an ordinance appropriating reimbursement funds from various entities for the fiscal year 2021 for Conway PD. Chief?
So the first one is, as he said, for the fiscal year 2021, we have received reimbursements for extra duty services, insurance proceeds, and donations, and we're asking for you to appropriate those into the, the correct funds.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to waive three readings. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes eight to zero.
Make a motion for adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance, Conway Police Department, for reimbursement of funds from various entities from 2021 calendar year, fiscal year. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
The ordinance O. 2229. Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Jones? Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Passes eight to zero. Okay, all right. And last, Chief Tappity again, is an ordinance appropriating reimbursement funds from various entities to the Conway Police Department.
Yes, and this is the same, extra duty services and insurance proceeds, however, this is for the year 2022.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes eight to zero.
Make a motion for adoption of the ordinance O. 2230.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Passes eight to zero. That's all the business we have tonight, counsel. I know that our next council meeting is scheduled during spring break. Is that, is that gonna work for everybody?
It does, does for me.
Does for me.
Be riding his motorcycle. Get your motor running. All right, I'll take most of the journey.
Second.